Ready?
We're good?
Yep.
Awesome, thank you. All right, I call the Sanborn Regional School Board meeting to order. Stan for the pledge. Flag is raised back there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So if you would, I don't know if you had time, but if you would like to read your prepared statement.
I don't have anything to read, can I just?
That's fine, yeah, no, read, just go.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, let me say a couple of words about myself. How long, five minutes? Certainly not forty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Let me see, I, my name's Stan Duncan, I've got a family, I've got three kids and seven gorgeous brilliant grandchildren that are going to be embarrassing when they get college. And I have, this is kind of an embarrassing thing to say because it's so unusual. I have two degrees in economics, a bachelor's and master's, and I have two degrees in religion, a master's and doctorate. And I have a fellowship from Harvard in both. And I'm convinced that the only reason Harvard let me in was because no one had ever applied for a religion and economics fellowship before. We need to check this guy out. But I did that. Mainly in my life, I have worked as a church pastor, eighteen different congregations in five different states. I worked as what they call an interim minister most of that time, which is, I'm not sure if you're familiar with what Protestants work, but they hire and fire their own pastors. And in between, they put together a search committee and interview people, and I'm the guy for the middle. And longest one is around three years, the shortest one is around two months, but they, they were very long. And I did a bunch of those, all over, five different states. I've done, oh, six, I forgot, there's one in Missouri. And I, we might want to come back to that later on, because I am pretty sure that many of the skills that I developed as a church pastor would be good in this kind of environment. You know, working with boards and committees and different people with different opinions and trying to hold them together and find consensus and go forward. Without insulting people, putting anyone down, that kind of thing. One quick statement, when I was, my last church was in Situate, and I'm gonna look up in the doc, me, where the choir sits, organ in the middle and choir across over here. And on this side over here is all these, oh, four or five Bernie Sanders people, and over on the other side is four or five Donald Trump people. And they all held hands and sang hymns, you know, had a wonderful time. That's America. That is what we're supposed to be doing, getting together, the thing that we believe in, together and sharing that. So we did that. And I can talk about that in some detail later on. I should, so I mainly serve churches, though I have taught economics in three different universities here and in, here, I mean, in this area, but not here. In Massachusetts, and then one back in Oklahoma from years ago. And I have written books, economic theory, and I've written books about religion, and written articles. In fact, I, for a long time, about a year or so, I worked for National Public Radio. I did commentaries on Marketplace, one of their programs there, and wrote the local religion column in the town I was living in. Now I've got a big book of those things. I guess the only other thing that's interesting like that is I also, for many years, played the piano in a bar. And would do it again if there's one close by that let me, but there isn't. And composed a lot of music, I've won awards for my artwork that I've put together, and I write novels. So there's that part of me as well. The reason I'm here is that everywhere I go, I really feel like I need to give back to the community, it's putting me up. It just seems like it's paying the dues. But I'm gonna be here for a long, long time. I told my son this last week, I was visiting him out in Iowa, that this, this is my settle down and die spot. And so, and I'm not gonna die till I'm one hundred and six, you know, so I'm gonna be here for a while. I told him that when I move from here, it's either because you came and you moved me into a nursing home or into a box. That's the only way I'm getting out of here. And I'm kidding, but I think there's something to it, that therefore I want to be involved, and I'll do something. And I think that you can't have a democracy if you don't have a functioning public school system. You know, public education is kind of a spinal cord for what keeps us alive as a democracy. And I can cite some evidence on that, you know, countries that killed off their education system, became a dictatorship within five, ten years. Now, I'm not saying that would happen, but you can see that without an educated electorate, you can really fall into some real dark pits. And I could mention some countries, for example, that happened. I'll do one real quick then. That happened in El Salvador, I used to work and live in El Salvador for several years as an economic development advisor. And they systematically went around the countryside and shut down all the schools. And then, then next time they had an election, they voted back the old dictators and the generals, and they went to war again. You know, it, it is, there's a slight parallel in those things. Don't let that happen. So that's why I wanted to be on the school board. And I know something about the state issues, I've been reading about some of those things, we can talk about those in a moment. Not as much about the local issues, unfortunately, you know, the newspaper system is not great any longer. It's hard to get any local news, so you can help me with some of those things. I know a few things we will talk about in there, but down into the weeds, I'm still needing to learn. Got enough?
Yeah.
More than enough.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. All right.
I can go on and on, but I can get real boring real quick if you like.
We have some, but we have some questions for you, and I think you did speak to some of the questions that we will be asking.
Yeah, I think you already.
Yeah, don't feel like you have to.
Okay, I can leave now, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if we ask a question you already touched on, you're not, you know.
Yeah.
So I'll start. First question, what attributes do you think are essential for a successful school board member?
One, I did kind of say something about what we do, but I'll say it in a different way now, which is someone who has a deep love for local public education. Another is an ability to work with a disparate group of people on all walks. And I know, as I said, from church experiences, you put a bunch of people in a room, you know, the building and grounds committee, they're arguing, we're not going to build that wing on the back of the church. It's kind of costing a hundred thousand dollars, we don't have the money. You know, you put those together in a room and find, you're kind of similar on this issue, kind of similar on that issue. So together, I think we can go forward, a couple of things we share in common. And sometimes it's tough to do that. You know, the budget committee, the fundraising committee, mission outreach committee, all those things have different opinions of what you should be doing. And find that they can agree on some things, let's hold on to those and build something creative with them. And the times that I have worked with school boards, it's just, again, you're moving around, it's not as much about the life. A lot of that kind of thing comes up, that we're all in here to try to make something a little better, but we disagree on what the better means. And if you can find a pearl here and a pearl there, and make a policy out of it somewhere, you really can draw them together. And I've done that for fifty years. I'm really old.
Well, not when you consider that you'll be around till I'm sixty.
Well, that's right.
Twenty-eight.
Seventy-eight. I met my old Sunday school teacher a week or so ago, and she is ninety-six. And her mother was ninety-six when she died, so she says, you know, I'm gonna do, and how, she said, I probably won't make it, but you know, if I'm gonna die at ninety-seven, I can't quibble. Okay, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, are you good with that? I have the next question.
Oh, good.
So, as you know, we're looking to fill Mr. Chris Patrick's seat because he moved. He made numerous contributions from finance and facilities to pushing for academic excellence, a lot of diligence.
Sounds good.
Something that he really displayed. He spent countless hours making sure there were checks and balances in all areas. Why do you think you're the right person to fill Mr. Chris Patrick's seat?
When you say checks and balances, how do you mean, like different parts of the school system itself, how they talk to one another?
One of the things that Jamie was good at, and the board found so beneficial and essential, was his ability to get into the finer details and really make sure that decisions were being made. By, you know, counting for all the data, accounting for this thing over here, that thing over there, how this thing impacts that thing. There was a lot of systems thinking that he was really good at. And so, we find this to be a, you know, terrible loss, that he's moved, right? So there's some, there's to some degree some shoes to fill in that area of being able to take the magnifying glass and look at certain areas. So how do you feel that you are qualified to bring the skills back?
And in general sense, that doesn't sound difficult, it sounds like something I've been doing before and I could probably do it. But if he was a superhuman person, I don't know if I could do that. It does sound like something within the range of things that I can, I've done before. Did he wear a cape?
Sometimes I think he might have.
We should have made one, too.
I think Jamie was really good at breaking down, like, the finances, and are we spending the money fiscally responsible but still providing a quality education?
Yeah.
Like, really finding that balance where our students need to learn and need to have access to things, but we also have to be mindful of our fiscal responsibility to our community. And I think Jamie really managed that balance pretty well, so we're just kind of curious if that's something that...
By the way, that's an issue that a couple of people I've been asking around have come up with, that balancing between fiscal responsibility and still being good for the students. And it is, there's no, there's no rule, there's an invisible line. And across this line, you're cheating students, across it over there, you're cheating, you don't have enough money for it. And, you know, I can't speak to whether or not I could be as good as he, but I'd certainly be willing to look into that kind of thing.
Thank you.
That's a tough question, too.
I have the next one. So in your past professional experience, what criteria have you used to make decisions about hiring people, retaining goods and services, or the effectiveness of a force of action?
You have adequate job descriptions for people you would hire? Okay. Is there usually a committee that talks about that, or just one person?
Committees, personal committees.
Personal committee, good. And do they typically agree, or do you say, no, I don't like that guy, could be a green here?
I think there's multiple rounds, but like, what are some of the skills or things that you use when you're looking to hire? Or, like, if you were looking to retain goods from the churches that you oversaw, like, how would you go through those sorts of processes?
Everything goods?
Yes.
Like purchasing for the library or something?
Yeah, so like, we have to go often through, like, what they call an RRF process, so we have to put things out to bid.
Ah, I see.
You need a new roof.
Yeah.
From the church.
Yeah. Yeah, and I have done that on occasion, usually not me hands-on, but usually working with the chair of the buildings and grounds kind of committee. And they almost always clears out the bid, and they always, there's always a number of people who could do it. Some are recommended by members, some are just strangers, but we bring them in. And some of them give really high bids, some, sometimes a really low bid is also meaning low quality, too, you need to watch for that. I'm not sure if there's any magic wand about putting that together, but it does take a lot of diligence to balance out. We built a daycare center on the back of one of our, like, the four or five rooms, they just, it was a place in the back of one of the churches that I had served. And that took a long time, about four or five days. It took about three or four years to raise some money for it, and then about two or three years to go with that, to start it before we had the money, in fact.
Thanks, thank you. All right, so we're just gonna keep going, let's keep going around, make it easy. What are your beliefs on the current status of public education, and what, if anything, do you feel needs to change in public education?
I think there is a movement in a lot of states, and New Hampshire's one of them, to try to diminish public education and expand private education. Open all private schools, homeschools, all those kinds of things. And that concerns me, because typically, it's kind of a new movement here, but in other states, typically, that means a decline in quality of the public education. And then gives it more of a target to be shot at for being not worth keeping. So I'm concerned about some of the things that I have been reading up on, about a tendency to build up the private school system in New Hampshire. And some other outside education sources that I have worked with and think are not productive. I have done some work in the past with a pretty good U, and found them pretty damaging. And I know that they're quartering the idea of bringing some of their information in here, and I think that would give them safety. Got answer to the question, or walk around it?
I, I think.
Condition up to right now?
Yeah, and, and, you know, anything.
I'm concerned about it, but I don't think it's awful right now, anything like that, but I'm concerned it might be some things that could happen in the future that would disadvantage to it. Right, is it correct to say that, I've heard this two or three times, but I haven't seen it in print, that New Hampshire has the lowest amount of funding for education in any of the states in the United States? It's not, it's the last in terms of funding amount? I don't know.
I don't know exactly.
Again, I've heard that quote, but I haven't looked.
Not great, but.
I think the way that we are funded in the state of New Hampshire is different than most other states.
I, yeah.
Because we have, we have property taxes.
Yeah, to fund education. I do know that several studies have shown that, average, to fund a high school student for, for, for a year is twelve thousand dollars. It varies a little bit, but you do it within, within ten to fourteen long as they're in. And for a private school, it's closer to twenty, twenty-four thousand dollars. And New Hampshire funds it at about four thousand five hundred. So it's way lower than the average, whether or not it's the bottom, right? Again, I've heard that, but I don't know it. That would be, eventually, that would be something we'd really concern about.
Something that I think we are all concerned about, and, yeah, there have been discussions, but it takes a lot to make that change happen, more than just.
Speaking of, how's that lawsuit coming? The Claremont lawsuit, yeah. We're in the fiftieth year of that thing.
Okay.
Yes.
So generally speaking, what do you see as the board's, the school board's role and responsibility?
It would change from, from year to year, but I think in general, it is to make sure that there's a cohesive movement forward of both the faculty and the public and the student body. The public who believes that their money is well spent in this institution, especially their kids, and the student body who feels like something meaningful is happening in their lives. And the faculty feels like they're not being put upon and stare at and ridicule. If those three pieces have come out with a positive assessment, then the direction will change from year to year by what your program's gonna be this year. But if those things are at odds with one another, then you just have a scatter shot that I think would be pretty harmful. Got the right neighborhood?
Next one, Dan. So in the development of a school district budget, what goals and objectives would guide your decision-making?
Say it all over again.
In the development of a school district budget, what goals and objectives would guide your decision-making?
Do you have a big hand or a say in the school district's budget for you?
We approve the budget, yeah. It's our, it's technically our budget.
Oh, not the amount, but the way it's divided up?
We, we determine, with the, with the budget committee, we determine the amount.
Oh, good, good. I really wasn't sure about that. Oh, goals for the future for the budget? Yeah, what was it, what?
What, so when you're, so when we look at creating a budget, what would be goals and objectives of your input to be creating a budget?
How good is the physical plan? Is it in good shape? Does it need to have a new sidewalk put in, or driveway collapsed, anything like that? Are there some big physical things like that?
There's always some big things.
There's always, yeah, with multiple, with multiple buildings.
We have a capital on firstment plan that we need to do.
I guess we could say what principles would guide, what principles philosophically would guide your approach to create a budget?
Well, it might be something close to what I said before, that is a principle that moves our, moves us forward as a whole rather than as disparate groups. But I think I should be more pointed than that, like, what kind of education I want to have in the future that this goal should point at. And I could be, I could kind of wax about that and guess, but my hunch is, you know, student bodies that graduate, seniors that feel more fulfilled about themselves. How to get there is a tough question, though. I'm not doing very good on that question.
Well, you're right, I think you answered it a little bit in the previous question.
If you are on the board, what are your priorities, and what do you want to achieve?
Having never been on the board before, that's not that easy to answer. I think that I would, would want to work on things like budget, and I think that I, with the budget committee perhaps, I think I would like to, I would like to assess where are some places that there might be a need, for example, is the reading level of the student body lower than the other schools around? I don't know, but if it was, I'd try to find out those kinds of things, and then that would be something where I'd like to put to spend some time. But not being there, not knowing how to address the issues, or it's kind of hard to know, oh, yeah, that's the one hard thing that I'd like to kind of find out.
Thank you.
Or a problem has somebody who just came in and hasn't served in the board before, and trying to imagine how it would be like. I've been here, by the way, I'm not sure if I said this earlier, but I've been here about three and a half years.
Oh, okay.
So I haven't been here, not a short amount of time, but certainly not a long one either.
So what are your thoughts about returning unspent budget dollars at the end of the fiscal year to the taxpayers?
My experience with something like that is that if you, if you return unspent dollars, then they will make a budget next year that's low, lower to the amount that you returned. And if you didn't spend a hundred thousand dollars, then the budget they would try, try to let you have next year would be a hundred thousand dollars less. I don't know what's going on here, but my point is that typically oversight boards tend to think that you didn't spend it, you didn't need it, and we'll cut you next time. So generally speaking, again, it may be different here, generally speaking, I would say there are plenty of things that could be spent for. It's not always the case, but generally, I would say that. How much of a fight is it over money? Pretty much when you say we need to have that.
You got your brass knuckles on you, though? It's a big.
It's a big, I mean, it's a big part of our district is making sure that we're fiscally responsible. We have a lot of family, we have a lot of families that are struggling to make end meets. We have a lot of older residents who are looking to stay within the homes that they raise their children in.
And the property taxes are killing them.
And we're also looking to, and be able to provide a quality education and a quality community to live in.
Yeah.
So, so yes, money can be a significant, I wouldn't say argument, I feel like we work pretty collaboratively, but it is a big, just a big point of what we discuss on a daily basis.
Yeah, I probably shouldn't have said argument or fight, but certainly disagreements on how to provide that up. Are there many occasions when you underspend your budget and have decisions to make about giving some of it back? I haven't very often.
Yeah, pretty much every, pretty regularly, yeah. Pretty much every year we have some money at the end. And we are allowed to retain a certain percentage of that, but above and beyond that, if you don't spend it, at the end of the fiscal year, maybe get some time to step it back.
By the way, is this mine?
Yes, absolutely.
So I have the next question.
Okay.
So what has the district done well over the last few years, and what has the district done poorly that you would change?
I'm new here, I don't know if I can answer that.
Okay, that's all right.
Yeah, that's why we have a lot of questions.
All right, okay, so my turn. What benefits do you see, if any, in the changes we have made regarding curriculum, grading, and intervention, and do you have any concerns about it?
Once again, that's a.
I was gonna say, that might be a tough one.
Yeah. What changes have you made in the curriculum?
Lots, adopting.
We've rolled out a new math curriculum, we're rolling out a new reading curriculum, we've rolled out a new grading system, we've rolled out an interventionist system.
Wait, I'm just saying, would you say we have rolled out, or we have ruled out?
We have rolled out.
Oh, ruled, okay, that's very different.
Yes, yes, rolled.
Well, more like a hydro jet.
Yeah.
But we have done a lot. Our, you had mentioned earlier, our reading and math scores are, I think, reading is at forty?
Forty percent.
Forty percent, and our math is at sixty percent, out of the state average.
When you say you have rolled one of those out, math and reading, are these packaged curriculums that you've been subscribed to or purchased?
Sorry, I thought aligned.
Yeah, aligned, yeah. We're aligning our curriculum.
How long has it been, has it functioned, are things better now?
Two years.
Two years for math, and reading will come out this year.
How are they doing?
So far, they've seen improvements in math scores, which is promising. It's only been, it's really a full year plus, I think, so we're going into our second full year with it, and we're already starting to see some growth, so that's great in the first year. And then really excited about the new reading program that is going to start this fall. We're hoping to see good results from that as well. So, yeah, but we put a lot of time into choosing the curriculums to make sure they're aligned vertically and horizontally.
And who goes to choose them?
It's.
And all the teachers?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's teachers, it's curriculum director, it's special educators, and then it comes to the board for review, and, you know, it's kind of, it's a very collaborative.
Different options for different programs, waiting, yeah.
It's a pretty collaborative effort, which is great.
You're gonna, I think you're gonna like this question. So as a school board member, would you see yourself primarily as a representative of the community or a representative of the school, of the school system? Or how would you view that?
Yeah, well, actually, both, so it'd be a matter of percentages rather than one or the other. Well, my first thing is I would be more of a representative of the school. However, the people out there really do feel like that the school system represents their values, and that it will do the kinds of things with their children who they're entrusting into your hands to do that. They, they carry a lot of weight on who we should be with. To alienate one or the other would be a disaster. What is the relationship between the school and the community?
I guess it kind of depends on the person, and how they view how you're doing things. You know, but I think, I think in general, you know, it's pretty good, and then I think it's improved. It's definitely improved.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
I have asked two or three people, and they all feel pretty good about it, but it's two, three, two is not a survey, so.
Right, right, right. Well, I'm glad that.
I'll take two or three.
We've come a long way.
So the next question is, what is the time commitment that you would expect you may have to put in as a board member, and can you talk about how you would meet that time commitment?
Yeah, I don't really know, I do know this, I'm retired, so I have time.
Okay.
Yeah, and so I'm assuming that I could do the time, but I'm not sure what would be the requirements of the time.
Do the time is a good, that's a good.
Perfect, probably.
Well, I've done that, too.
She's shaking her head over there, she's like, yep.
She was on the board, she was on the board before, so, yeah.
Dr. Brown is on our budget committee.
Yes, she's on the board, budget committee.
It's like working two jobs.
Even if you're retired, it's like working two jobs.
All right, so the last question is, do you have any last questions for us?
Oh, I did, I'd have asked them all, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, hold on a second. I think I've covered all the questions that I wanted. Couple of people I talked to, you said, make sure you ask them about the discussions going on between Fremont and Sanborn.
Yeah, we just put out our nice little presentation and.
Yeah, a.
FAQ, because there's a lot we can't publicly share because it is a negotiation, so legally, we are not allowed to.
Yeah, okay.
But we are working really hard, but we've been very active in trying to make sure that, when, you know, they said, you know, this is the RFQ, this is the deadline. We worked really hard to make sure that, you know, we did it really well, you know, we've been trying to be extremely thorough with making sure that, you know, everything we've put forward so far is hundred percent, and we put it, we put in a lot of work, it just, it's hard because.
It's a contract negotiation.
Yeah, so we can't, we can't talk about. Yeah, so we can't, we can't talk about it. There's so much that we want to talk about and tell everybody.
Don't worry about it.
Because we've worked so hard on it, but we can't.
But there is a lot of information in there.
Yeah.
In that FAQ, that's.
And I think, so did it also go in the Carriage Town?
Yes, it went on the Carriage Town, it's on our website too, questions to answer.
Oh, yeah.
So we thought of, we sort of aggregated all the questions that we could think of that people might be asking and answered.
Oh, really? Oh, I'll look that up.
Yeah, as much as we're legally allowed to say.
Yeah, yeah, so, I know it's tough because we wanna, we wanna be able to say more and tell everybody what we're really doing, but.
Well, eventually you can.
Eventually we can, but our hands are tied at this point, so.
I just ran across the, the policy book today.
Yeah.
And I didn't realize it was online, that was kind of cool. Seven thousand pages long.
Right, yes.
If I run across this a few days ago, I might have a couple of questions about that too. But I was going into the budget.
We have a policy for everything.
I know, pretty much, pretty much. It's our job to follow, follow all policies, so. We, we become very familiar with the policies as we, the longer we're on board, the more policies.
Policy chair.
Yeah.
Sam was policy chair too.
How large was it when it was actually printed? It looked like several hundred pages long, wasn't it?
I don't think I've ever seen it printed.
I don't think I've ever seen it printed either.
You know, it can be online, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway.
Any other questions about on the board?
No. Do we always get free water when we don't?
Yes, we do.
That's been my experience.
Every time. Phyllis is fabulous. She brings us water, she makes sure we all have a nice water bottle ready to go. All right, well, thank you so much. We really appreciate your time.
All right.
All right, so if you would like to start, I don't know if you have a proposed statement that you would like to share.
I did prepare something. I'm gonna have to read it because I got an email last night.
I know, yep, I apologize.
Not much prep time.
No, it was not, so I apologize for that. And that's why I had Phyllis call this morning to make sure everybody had seen that, so.
So I will read it again, I'd rather do it from the top of my head, but I guess a little background. My name's Kent Hamilton. My wife and I have been residents of Newton for twenty years. I have a, my degree is in mechanical engineering from the University of Lowell. After I graduated, I quickly learned that computers were gonna replace mechanical engineers, or a lot of us. They do calculations about a million times faster than we could in a slide role, so. I went back to school, WPI, took post-grad classes in computer science, and have been in IT ever since. I started my professional career at Jerry's Ferrari in Groveland, I don't know if you're familiar with it, at the age of fourteen. It's a little store on the right as you drive through Groveland with Georgetown. I moved on from Jerry's to Oracle Corp eventually, eighty thousand employee global corporation. I was a director of software development and professional services at Oracle. I left Oracle in two thousand and seven and started my own consulting firm, IT consulting. I did that for fifteen years until COVID killed my business. Thankfully, it didn't kill me, but it killed my business. I work in the utility sector, so a lot of utilities kind of shut down when they did what they do, lights on work only. So they canceled all in-flight IT projects and just focused on keeping the lights on and the gas flowing, so. For two years, we had no work coming in, so I moved on to another, another energy software company. It's kind of my background. I guess from a, you know, education perspective and why I'm in front of a school board, my view is that against public education isn't just for the kids, it's for the community. There's about a million quotes out there on why we invest in education as we do. I wrote down a couple of them. An educated citizenry is a vital requisite for a free people. Another one, without an educated populace, democracy cannot sustain itself. Ben Franklin said, an investment in knowledge pays the best dividends. And the last one of many is an econ, a strong economy begins with a strong, well-educated workforce. So I think that's the role of our K through twelve education and university education. My, my personal belief is we have to focus on the kids, particularly K through four, where you build a strong foundation. You know, my kids are a little bit older, but I saw them go through the public school system. I know by the time they're, by the time they're in high school, if they don't have that strong foundation, they're gonna struggle. And when they struggle, one of my kids struggled, they start to fool around, they're discouraged, they're distracted, they become a distraction in the classroom, lacking that strong foundation. Because they're gonna struggle with the course material, right? Science, history, civics, what does it build on? It builds on the three R's, reading, writing, arithmetic. So I think my personal belief is K through four is where we really have to focus on the kids. Make sure when they enter fifth grade, they have that strong foundation. That's kind of my personal belief. As a school board member, I think not just the school board, but school boards across the country play a pivotal role in that, right? Making sure our kids are ready to be, you know, active, beneficial participants in society. Having that education, without that education, you know, they're gonna have a hard time succeeding in business in life, so. That's why I'm here. Hopefully, I can help make a difference in this school board.
Thank you. All right.
You did very good.
So we'll just kind of, we have some questions for you, so we'll just kind of rotate around, take care of asking the questions. So I'll start. So what attributes, I think you kind of touched on, you know, a little bit of some of these already, but we'll keep going through all of them. What attributes do you think are essential for a successful school board member?
I think, I think there has to be a balance within the school board, not just for an individual member, but I'll just go back to my education at U of Lowell. There were professors who had taught their entire career, and there were professors who came from industry. And I think having the balance is important, and I think so in a, in a school, on a school board, having a balance of perspectives. Having one mind just leads to one outcome. You have to have different kind of perspectives. I share with you my perspective. I think the three R's are important. I think, and again, I guess we teach my own kids' education, they didn't learn civics, they know nothing about how our government functions. I think that's a failing of the school system they went through. Certainly some, you know, a decent knowledge of history. You know, there's a million quotes about history too. We don't learn, we don't learn from history, we create our mistakes, so. Certainly the three R's in K through four are the foundation for science and history and civics and things that come after it.
Thank you.
So presently, we're looking to fill Mr. Fitzpatrick's seat, which is vacated because he moved. He made numerous contributions from the finance and facilities committees that he was on and pushing for academic excellence. He spent a lot of time, countless hours, making sure that there were checks and balances in all areas. And sort of what I mean by that is he would go through things very detailed, find two calm, make sure that all the, the sort of, the outcomes that we were looking for were really being aimed for, but also that we were being fiscally responsible in terms of spending was being aimed at. So why do you think you have certain attributes? And why should I say this first? The board found that extremely valuable, that attention to detail and the commitment to those, those points. So why do you think that you would be the right person to continue with that, those principles? I think I'd put it in my, my submission, not an application, I don't recall, but when I.
Your submission was.
My submission.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a strong background in data analytics, that's what I've been doing in computer science for the last twenty, thirty years. And I, you know, I certainly, you have a budget committee, I can certainly contribute in the budget committee. Kind of an Excel, was on a relational database, was still working at Oracle Corp, so that's somewhere I could jump in and help right away. You know, I, you know, I guess at the risk of repeating myself, I believe in academic excellence. I went on the state's education, the Department of Education of the state, and I don't know if the numbers are correct, but they said the Sanborn District proficiency for ELA is forty-three percent, math is thirty-five percent, and science is twenty-seven percent. I don't know if that's accurate, but.
A hundred percent. I know that our reading and math scores are lower than we would like, that's why we were working towards things. But I don't know if those numbers are accurate, but yes, we can do, we can and should do better for our students.
So those are what, on the state's website today, I double-checked. And again, I don't know if they're accurate, but what I do want to say is believing in academic excellence. I would like myself, as a board member, to help move those and move those substantially. I don't think, I mean, let's, let's zoom in for the sake of conversation, thirty-five percent math proficiency is accurate. That means sixty-five percent of the kids are below grade level in mathematics. As a citizen of this community, I don't, you know, that's not something that I, I don't say it's not acceptable. It's something that we shouldn't accept. We should say, we can do better. We can do better for the kids, we can do better for the time, for the times.
So I have the next one. Sorry, I'm Heathering, I'm by the way. Nice to meet you as well. In your past professional experience, which criteria do you use to make decisions about hiring people, retaining goods in the services or the effectiveness for a force of action? So for example, we are part of certain committees for hiring administrative staff, but also if there's a roof, we have to be part of that process. How do you kind of, how, what's your process in those types of situations?
I'm not sure I quite get the question, but running my own company, I've done procurement for fifteen years. I've done, certainly responded to RFPs, I've written RFPs.
That's exactly what.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, it was a weirdly worded question, so, but yeah, so we have to do procurement, RFRs. What is kind of your approach to those?
I've, I've done them in my industry for thirty years, both responding to them and writing them. I'm not familiar with the public procurement process. I know they're federal guidelines. I've actually worked in the public sphere, on one side of the public sphere, in utilities. So again, I've written to, written them and I've responded to them, and I, I would look for guidance from you folks. I can certainly contribute, I have a lot of experience with it, but I've not written kind of public procurement for like a school or, you know, government building or something like that. But I, and I do that, I'm just repeating myself, I do have a ton of experience writing and responding to RFPs.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yep.
All right, back to me. So what are your beliefs on the current status of public education? And what, if anything, do you feel, what if anything do you feel the need to change in public education?
If you can believe the fake news, the US has dropped to about thirty, plus or minus, depending on what news articles you read, what news sources you read in language arts and math globally. When I was a kid, we were number one in both. So I think it's fair to say we're doing something wrong. I, I don't claim to have the right answer. I'm quite certain nobody can claim to have the right answer because we're clearly doing something wrong. Even when I was a kid in the seventies in middle school, looking back, I, I view what, I was in the Penn State school system. They almost treated us like, I felt like lab rats, like they experimented with us. They introduced this thing in seventh grade, I think it's some year called IPI, individually described instruction. The thought was, put all the kids together, good in math, not so good in math, what have you, and let them progress at their own rate. It was great, so we'd walk up to the counter, you'd take a card out, you'd go back to your seat, you'd do the little exercise, and you'd take a quiz and you'd pass. What they didn't realize is the kids who were a little more advanced in math, we were done in February. They had nothing for us to do from March, April to the end of the school year. So me and my friends kind of got in trouble, not bad trouble, just like running in the hallway and kind of goofing around. What I would support is any policy that has a proven impact on positive outcomes. And I say proven again, it's not, it's not an experiment, they're not, the kids aren't lab rats. It's what has worked, you know, what can we implement that has been proven to work to help, again, move us forward, improve the quality of new education we provide to kids. Okay, so what do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities? I guess, from my limited knowledge, you have several areas responsible. Clearly, one is education, it's curriculum, it's policy, it's also, as Heather asked about, mentioned, it's overall procurement, it's budgets. I don't know all of the subcommittees, but I know those are several of the subcommittees. So beyond just, beyond just curriculum, it's managing the budgets, it's helping with procurement, it's running the whole school system.
I'll just take notes. Because I won't remember.
And I can't do that or I can't listen at the same time, so.
You do, you're. I'm with you. I either listen or I write. In our, in our meetings, in the world I live in, we actually strive for that. It's the person who's not supposed to listen, they're just supposed to write. But you're doing a good job of doing that. I'm sorry.
Number six, okay, that's awesome. In the development of school district budget, what, what principles would guide you on your decision-making?
I guess one way of thinking of it, one way I think of it is kind of an ROI, right? It is an investment. The product they're producing is the education of the kids. Clearly, they need clean, I'm not welcoming, but I'll use the word welcoming surroundings to be in, right? You don't want leaky roads and fifty-five gallon trash barrels in the middle of the floor, sucked in water. It's not, it's not a conducive learning environment for the kids. So it all weighs into that, into that ROI, you know, good functioning facilities, technology, equipment, certainly a well-trained teaching staff. I don't know if training's a component of it. Because at the end of the day, I hate that term, but at the end of the day, it's the teachers who are the frontline for the kids, right? So making sure we have teachers that are well-trained in their, in their, in their subject areas. And I guess all that, all that feeds into, into an ROI, and then what's the ROI is that we give, we move this, you know, we move the bell curve from where it is today more to the right, where more of our kids are at a proficient level in language arts and math and science.
All right, so I have my next. If you are on the board, what are your priorities and what do you want to achieve?
Again, again, what I want to achieve is improving our, improving our proficiency levels. Ultimately, that every, I think, everything we do, every dollar we spend, that's the product. That's the product that we produce, right? If you do this as a business, we have, we have these kids and it's the education we provide, and that's the product. So those are my priorities. Again, from a curriculum perspective, it's what, what changes can we make? Can we make that are impactful, that are proven impactful for helping improve outcomes? Yeah, for other investments, again, like technology, we all know, like, you know, computers and what have you, you can develop them today, so make sure the kids have a foundation. We're all not going to be engineers or doctors, right? We're gonna be carpenters, we're gonna be bakers, we're gonna be, you know, any number of professions around there, auto welding, mechanics, and what have you. But every profession, every member of society needs that foundation. Reading, writing, and arithmetic, not, there's not a single profession out there that doesn't depend on them as a solid foundation, so. My priorities ultimately are, you know, what can we do? And again, whether it's facilities, technology, training, curriculum, this can improve those outcomes and give us, give us the community ROI that we're making, the investment we're making in education, in kids' education. So. Next question. What are your thoughts about returning unspent budget dollars at the end of the fiscal year to the taxpayers? Normally, I would just say yes right out of hand because I want my, I want my tax dollars back. I want one of my federal tax dollars back. It's, it's either that or it's, you know, kind of rainy day fun. I mean, it's not money that we can just go throw away. Either it's return to the taxpayers, or it's return to the taxpayers in another fashion, which is paid forward. Like sometimes it sounds, just pay it forward and use it next year to offset some costs. So I wouldn't say, I would need a lot more conversation understanding to have a yes or no answer. But, you know, either way, it's the taxpayer's dollars, and either we return it to them and, you know, next year's taxes go towards next year's expenses, or you pay it forward, and maybe there's some projects that are needed but can't be funded, that you can use it for. I would be open to, to the conversation. Consume the federal tax, but that dollar's I want back.
So in your view, what has the district done well over the last few years? And what have we done poorly that you would like to help change?
I think, the little bit I've watched, trying to get up to speed on your YouTube videos, I think, again, pushing some of the curriculum changes. I think the payoff is, is going to be measured in years, it's not going to be measured in one year. But I'd, I'd like to think that the curriculum changes that are being made are going to, you know, have that payoff, have that ROI, say, three to five years down the road. You're not going to see them overnight. I think, you know, I think some of the fiscal responsibility has been good. You're not wasting the taxpayer dollars. I know some of the past and present board members who have had a view towards fiscal responsibility. I think it's important, I mean, we all do as, as homeowners, as heads of households, right? We have a budget and we have to live within it, and I think the schools do as well, which, again, you have to prioritize investments. We would all like to have everything for the kids, but we can't, so we have to prioritize. I don't know the, I don't know the budget numbers and budget constraints well here. I do have a friend who's from Lexington, Massachusetts, a very wealthy community, it drives him crazy. He's never had kids, he's a single guy, and they just put a four-million-dollar facade on the front of the building because they didn't like the old facade. Nice, huh?
We all love.
Yeah. Somebody turn around and we'll leave today.
Right.
Fiscal responsibility, as if I were a taxpayer in Lexington, Mass., I'd be pulling my hair out. You know, you just took all of our tax dollars because you didn't like the old facade, right? So yeah, there has to be, has to be fiscal responsibility, and that means priorities. And certainly, the priority again is the outcomes, because, you know, there's many factors, and it's technology, training, different things. Yeah, I think certainly that the curriculum changes that are being put in and the fiscal responsibility that the recent board members have brought, I think, is beneficial.
Okay. All right, no, that was my question.
Okay.
I know, we're not, we don't do this a lot, so we're not good at this.
Number ten?
Yeah, you're number ten.
What benefits do you see, if any, in the changes we've made regarding curriculum, grading, and intervention? Do you have any concerns about it?
I don't know, because I think the recent changes, again, like I said a minute ago, it's going to take a few years to see a payoff. What I'd like to see is twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, an uptrend in, in our outcomes here. That's how we measure them. It's, it's hard to get data, the state doesn't disclose a lot of data. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a details guy. They kind of roll everything up and give you these top-line numbers like, oh, thirty-five percent proficient math. Well, let me see the details behind that, right? I didn't say the details, but I'd like to go back to, say, twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, twenty-twenty-two, and then twenty-twenty-five. That's how you have to look at it, you can't look at it in a, you know, just one year. So the changes we make today, you're going to see, you know, a trend line going up, hopefully. If the trend line is not going up, then what we did didn't work. That's how, that's how you would measure it.
As a school board member, would you see yourself primarily as a representative of the community or a representative of the school system? Or how would you view your role?
Mostly the community. I think, I mean, the schools are here to serve the community, right? That's what we're doing, it's a, call ourselves public servants from the academy as well. So I think we're going to serve the needs of the public, which is why the public spends, what it spends on, on K through twelve education every year.
It's definitely where it lost because.
I know. I just wanted to let them know.
Do you want to get this one?
No, no, I mean.
Did we skip you?
Uh, you think we did.
Sorry. What is a time commitment that you expect that you have to put in as a board member? And can you talk about how you're going to meet that commitment?
I understand the regular scheduled meetings. I don't have to put it in my submission letter, but I do travel for business on occasion. It's the nature of my, nature of my business. From what I understand, there's a minimum kind of quorum required in person. If I'm not traveling, I'll always be here. If I am traveling, I can always dial Zoom Teams or whatever technology the board uses. Off, off-hours when not in meetings, I would, I would expect to put in, well, probably a variable, right? Over the course of the school year, there are times like budget crunch time where you're going to put in a lot more time, and then there's other times where you put in less time. But on average, it's like five to ten hours a week.
It's pretty average.
And finally, do you have any last questions for us?
I guess, there are a couple of things in the, right, like Fremont, the Fremont situation. What are the, what are the board's priorities for twenty-twenty? Because this position is, I understand it, it's an interim position until March of next year, and then if whoever's in this position wants to continue on, they have to run for office, and anyone can run for office next March, so this is just a nine-month. But say for the next nine months, if you were to, you know, decide me to be a member of the board, I'd be honored. What would be your priorities? What are your priorities for the next, for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four?
I think Fremont is honestly one of our priorities. The implementation of our reading curriculum that we chose at the end of last year, at the end of the last school year. And continuous with the math curriculum, I think are the three off the top of my head. I don't know, John, what other ones do we make?
And, you know, just making sure that we do everything to support the administrators and everyone through the NIES accreditation process, that's another big one.
We have our teachers' contract coming up this year as well.
Yeah, the teachers' contract coming up. There's a lot. There's a lot, yeah. It's a big night, yeah.
And we've got a pretty robust strategic plan that we've been working towards, and a lot of these areas will fall, fall into our strategic plan as well.
Well, I would like to be in a position to help, I'm certain.
Did you see the, we had, we put a communication out regarding Fremont recently, I don't know if you've seen it.
No, I was, I was on the website last week, I didn't see it last week.
It was posted on the school, on the front page of the.
Yeah, I think if you're on the district part of it, not that it's been.
Yeah.
But it's on the district website. There's a link to an FAQ in a little video. We're just going to talk about what we're doing with the process, everything that we can talk about legally, because it is, you know, negotiation, it's, you know, so we can't talk about a lot. But like I said in the last interview, there's so much we need to share, but we can't, so.
It's going to be a big deal.
It's a really big deal, we've been doing a lot of work, and we'd love to be able to tell everybody all about it, but until time comes that we have legally allowed to, we can't. But we did put together kind of some of the most frequently asked questions that we've heard or we could think of that people would be asking, just to kind of give as much information as we can. So that's there. And I think, Phyllis, it also went out in the Carriageway Town newspaper. So it's also, yeah, it just went out on, was it this past Thursday it went in?
This, it was, this was last week's.
Yeah, I think it just came out last week.
I think it was on the front of the website, too.
Yep. So, yes, we did try and to put out some information to keep the public up to date.
I guess it's a double-edged sword because the public does have a vested interest.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. And that's why we wanted to try and make sure that we shared whatever information we could.
There's some communication coming out, yeah?
Yeah. Do you have any other questions?
No. As I said, I understand it's a nine-month position. I'd like to think I can certainly jump in and help on budgets, like I'm some of the spreadsheet, data, data guide. Math curriculum, I'm an engineer, I have a math background, I'm happy to help there. I don't know to what extent the board gets involved in actually looking at the class material in detail, but I would be very interested in seeing what they're putting in front of the kids for math these days. The math that my kids, my kids are thirty-plus or minus, the math they did ten, fifteen years ago was not the math that I know. And frankly, it wasn't good, they don't have a good foundation, the way they were taught. I don't know what they called it, but they didn't even have to get an answer right. It's just the effort that counted, and they say, no, that's not how airplanes fly, that's not how cars drive. You don't get a star for effort when it comes to mathematics. So I'm kind of, I have strong opinions about math and its importance. Those are my best friends, and they just profess me with strong opinions about the importance of English, right? But anyways, I'd, I'd love to see the math curriculum, and what we're putting in front of the kids, and how we're building that foundation. Because, you know, they can't do science, they can't do anything in that, in that realm without a solid foundation now.
It's all about scaffolding.
Yep.
That's what we talk about.
Okay.
Yeah. And aligning, goes on to be vertically, but yeah, we walk and walk and walk the conversation.
Yeah.
I don't think we ever don't talk about it. Yeah. All right. I think, if you don't have any more questions for us?
No.
Awesome. Okay. I appreciate your time. I think we will probably go into a non-public real quick here. So I'll call us into a non-public, or RSA ninety-one A, phone three, one, one, two, letters B and C. Second. All right, we'll call in Heather.
So.
Micah.
Yeah.
And myself, yes. All right.
Do I head out now?
Yes, if you.
Yeah, if everybody wants.
So we want to thank everyone for coming out today, both candidates. This was a difficult decision that we had, because both candidates had a clear and sincere desire to serve the community as part of the school board. After deliberation, I would move to nominate Ken Hamilton to be interim seat.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Thank you.
Welcome.